All right. Welcome to Nottingham to the Nottingham Board of Select for August 19th, 2024. We're going to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Payroll manifests. Anybody want questions?
I do like the format. It seems a little bit easier along the manifest. She kind of, I don't know if that was a suggestion or...
No.
I make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifests and payroll for August 19th, August 20th.
A second?
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye, John.
Aye.
Yeah, we don't have to do that.
Aye.
We're just saying aye. Aye. Did we figure that one last time?
I forgot.
To be sure. Do we get approval for the minutes for August 5th?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of August 5th. That's written.
Aye, second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll be tabling the minutes for the non-public for August 5th. Boards and committees. Sure as have a nice CIP.
We just had CIP. So we just had CIP. We went over the things that were proposed or provided so far. We still have some things that were carried over that we didn't have printed that were just moved along. We do have some questions because some of the stuff seemed to have some blank space going further out than just current. So we wanted to get back to some of the departments on that. I know that school also has some things that they're still investigating. And our next meeting is September 30th at 5:30.
Okay.
Additionally, I met with the water management, BLIA Water Management Committee. So working on that proposal for the grant.
Mm-hmm.
And we're having a review of that draft on Thursday.
We had a busy planning board meeting last Wednesday. We had five cases on the agenda. One of the cases was pushed off until a later date. One case was rescinded without prejudice. And then we had Shea Concrete came in, which is located on Route 4. The area had a design for the building and stuff. They just made some slight changes and they came in front of the board for approval, which they got. Second, there was another, it was one of the lots that was sold back on the USA Springs. But the guy that's actually doing it is not the industrial park, different. He is running a business that he's selling truck beds out of, gets used truck beds, pretty cool, from like Texas and stuff unrest, you know, brings them there and then just resells them. And he's, I think he's doing some of his construction businesses out of there also. So he was coming through to see some improvements he was going to do on the building, you know, different lighting and just, just stuff on the building to, and making it bigger and basically fixing up the area, which will be nice to see. Then the other one, which took most of the evening up, was the four lot subdivision on Mill Pond Road, which we will be talking about. One of the discrepancies which came up was on there was about the building envelope of 30,000 square feet for a lot, whether the septic has to be in that 30,000 square feet. If you look at our zoning ordinances, it doesn't specify. If you look at our other ordinances, it does. So when we have that meeting on the 28th, the joint meeting with the planning board, zoning board, building inspector and stuff like that, that will be a, there's some things that we've noticed where they don't explain quite as well as they should. So that was one thing that, but so that is being pushed off until after that meeting, the 28th. So we'll be back before that subdivision goes through or not. But that was something, again, it's always something that comes up that's, you know, even I didn't see that one coming, so. But we were still able to finish before 10 o'clock, which was, I give Teresa Bascom a plaud for running a very efficient and quick meeting, so. But that's really what was going on for the planning board. So again, our next meeting is for the 28th, and that's for our joint meeting.
Are we explaining?
Yes. It's a meeting that we normally have every single year. Just seems this year there's going to be a lot more on our agenda to...
Is it a joint one?
It's our joint meeting. It's open to the public if anybody wants to come. It's not closed or anything like this, but it's a workshop meeting that we're going to have, you know, to go over a bunch of different things that we've seen over the past year or so with what's going on with the developments and stuff like this and things if we think that might need to be changed and ideas from there might actually go to warrant articles for if things that are written improperly or need to be adjusted. That's where some of these ideas will come for that, those future things. Rec, highway, recycling? Nothing for the recycling? I don't have anything.
Nothing new for rec. I'm meeting with them tomorrow to kind of talk about some planning for 2025 and a recreation committee potentially. And then budget committee, we're meeting on Thursday with NHMA is doing a budget training for budget committee and CIP.
And Board of Selectmen if you're working.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't talked to Steve about highway, so.
Right. Well, sometimes no news is okay.
Assumed.
Assumed, yes. Always got to assume. Town Minister's report, are you going to give us the details of how's our library going?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the first item on my agenda.
There you go. I can't see it, so I'm just asking.
The library leach field replacement's well underway, albeit there were some challenges that were faced. Approximately eight feet of fill was excavated from the new leach field location. New material was brought in to give it a new proper subgrade. There was fill that, I think one of the roads that was constructed, there was fill that was added into the site where the new leach field is, and it was subpar to what it should be for our new leach bed.
Is that what it was?
Yes. So they had to excavate all that material out. They went down eight feet. They found multiple layers of topsoil and other vegetative matter that just was not going to work with the new leach field. So they excavated all out, put in some, some better fill material, and then of course laid the stone in the pipe system. And then the second issue that they ran into is the new tank location. Once they dug that up, they hit ledge, and it was about a foot and a half higher than the tank needed to be. The alternative would have been they could have got a, what they call ledge tank, which would have been wider, and we're already, we're already within distance of wetlands and it was going to be cutting it too close. So the alternative was to jackhammer the ledge, which they've been doing. I think they finished up this afternoon to bring the ledge down about a foot and a half to where the tank needed to be set. So I believe the tank is now set. It was supposed to be set this afternoon and...
Did we go far over budget on this?
Well, it is, it's material and some subcontracted equipment, so we really didn't have a budget. I mean, originally they were estimating that it could be anywhere in the neighborhood of 20,000 to 25,000. So hopefully it will still be well less than that using...
So the library is still going to be open?
So the library, when I had talked to Amanda, the interim director, last week, they were planning on opening tomorrow, which was their planned reopening. And I contacted Emmys and Emmys was kind enough to donate an ADA accessible porta potty just until we could get the system up and running. But I, I understand that the library posted over the weekend that they would not be reopening until Thursday this week. With the tank in place, they can still have the restrooms up and running, and then we'll just have to have the tank pumped out until we can get the approval for operation from New Hampshire DES. I don't know if that's going to be something that's going to happen on Thursday or not. That's still up in the air. So we're going to have the porta potty set in the interim until we can get that, the inspector out and do everything.
Well, maybe open on Tuesday or not.
My understanding is they've delayed their opening to Thursday of this week.
Thank you.
I can't remember what the date was. It would have probably been...
So the 21st on assignment.
I would have said 21st. I thought it's the 21st, but I wasn't sure.
That would be Wednesday.
That would be Wednesday.
That's it. Or actually you said closed on the 21st.
Right.
Yeah.
So that'd be open on 22nd. Okay. Yep. No, that makes sense. Okay, good. So it covers that.
Yeah. So I guess the fortunate way to look at it is where we're doing it in-house. We won't have that, that overage that maybe a private contractor would have had to charge us for, but the multiple challenges that we faced. But demolition work is continuing in the rear of the community center. I believe the rear four classrooms are now fully opened up. We filled our second 30-yard container with demo debris, and they're just going to continue plugging away at it. I have to get that emptied, and again, they'll just continue on. And they're, they're shutting down electrical and old systems as they're going through and removing the interior partitions. What else? Just for an announcement, the fire department applied for grant funding through the fiscal year 2023 Assistance to Firefighters Grant and was successful in receiving an award. We just got notification on Friday. The award is in the amount of $163,844.32, and this is towards their portable replacement, portable radio replacement. There is a condition that non-federal funds equal to or greater than 5%, which would be $8,192.22, be contributed for a total approved budget of $172,036.54. This would require us to hold a public hearing, which I would like to schedule at your next meeting, September 3rd at 7:00 PM for the acceptance of the funds. And then hopefully we can get a representative from the fire department here to talk more about what they're seeking. And then for another announcement, a decision was rendered on the inquiry filed by Doug Bates with the right to know embudsman regarding redactions made on various documents supplied in 91A requests. The right to know embudsman declared that the redactions made by the town that were called in question were consistent with 91A. Then moving on to action items, there is a petition for license for a utility pole, utility pole installment on Deerfield Road submitted by Eversource. I'm looking for a motion to approve that. It is under review by Steve Rollins. I don't have his signature on the document yet. I just have to connect with him. I've been out of the office for two days, so.
Is that the one on Friday?
Yep, that was the one that was sent over to you on Friday. But just for the record, I do need a recorded motion. I'm sorry.
My bad, Friday.
I had sent the information to the board.
So you just need approval or you have an address?
It's a location on Deerfield Road by GPS coordinate.
Okay, I see it.
And there's a map, but it's a really small scale.
Yeah, it's like six feet of road. I'll make a motion to approve the utility pole petition by Eversource. License number would be 65-0743 for replacement of the pole on Deerfield Road.
Aye, second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions?
I just have one question on that. Is it two poles or one? Because it was like 17 and 17A or seven and 17A or...
I think it's, I think it's two poles.
And that's why I was like, it...
There's two separate...
Just reading it, it seemed a little weird to me. I mean, I'm okay with it.
You mean that one or the 71, the property tax payment that was after?
No, I was talking about the...
No, it's the poles, because there's two.
It was like two numbers referenced in it, like pole this and like...
7As slash 17S and 7A17 dash one. Install pole and anchor for both.
For, it says both in there?
Pole and anchor.
Okay, so there's two poles. Okay.
Yeah. So this, they do their page numbers weird.
And we taxed them anyway, right?
Correct.
So, I mean...
I believe these are just replacement.
Yeah, I was...
This is 17S.
Are they just replacements? Because then don't they just replace them automatically?
That's the same number.
Yeah, the two forms, right. It was like two forms, but they had the same numbers on both forms. So I was confused.
Unless one's like the pole or one's the...
The email only refers to one.
Yeah.
It says according, attached, please find Eversource petition for pole license 650743. So it's the same, I think it's just two copies of the same document.
But then it has two pole numbers.
I think that document below shows all the different poles that are going to private houses, but the one with the black dot is the one that's in reference.
7A17S is one pole.
And it's new or replacement? Do we, can, can we tell?
Pole, remove. It looks like it's a replacement, because the black dot next to it, if you go to the legend on the top of the map, it says remove, and then the white would be install.
Because we don't get license requests for every pole they replace, do we?
I think it's only new.
Because if it's new, it adds to the tax rule.
Yeah.
If it's a replacement, I assume it's just...
Which would be why they would have to notify us through license so that we can identify and pick out.
Yeah. All right, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. I just wanted to understand better.
It doesn't even look like actually, it just looks like underneath, it looks like the reference is a zero with X is kind of over it looks like. So feel a bit of install, remove, reference. Maybe not. Because if it was just white installed, it'd be installing all four poles. Just somehow they're in it.
I was going to say, if you'd like to table it, I can get clarification on it.
I mean, I, I don't know if we really need it. I mean, it's something that somebody's, if we don't approve it, somebody's not going I was just trying to get a better understanding of it, you know? I don't think we need a table. I just want to know what it actually meant.
So I think if you look at the map, you've got four poles that are depicted on here, 17A-172, 17A17 dash one, 7A17, and 7A17S. 17A17S, the remark is to install a pole and anchor, and I think that is the subject.
Okay. All right, so it's a new pole. That's fine.
And both, I think it's a duplicate, because both letters say the same thing, 1771AS.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, that's part of what the confusion was, the duplicate pages.
Sorry to read more into this. I just thought it was a pole.
That sort of looked like to me. The application just says one pole, both of the letters.
Yeah.
So my recommendation, if you're clear on the 7A17S, would be to make a motion on that one. If there is a second one, they're going to have to clarify the location.
Okay. I'm good with that.
So we have a motion.
Oh.
I made a motion to approve the license number 650743 for recommending installing a pole being numbered 7A-17S.
And I seconded.
You seconded.
We just had a discussion. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Thank you. Next action item, in non-public session at the last meeting, there was a review per the request of Jay Veltchak Jr. to unseal the non-public session minutes from February 6, 2024. I request a motion for you to determine the fate of those minutes.
Make a motion to release the minutes or unseal the minutes?
Unseal them.
Correct.
Else will we...
Okay. I'll say. Unseal the minutes from...
February 6.
February 6, 2024.
I'll say.
All in favor say aye.
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 And the last action item, in reference to the brush chipper that we talked about last week, or at the last meeting rather, windmill equipment is the outfit that it would be purchased from. The total purchase price is $23,000. Steve was able to go take a look at it in person, confirm the unit's in great condition, worth the asking price. The purchase includes new blades plus the original ones, which are still able to be sharpened, new pickup tube, and a full service on the unit. So if you are in, if you're agreeable to the purchase, then the request was to have the $23,000 come from the Senate Bill 401 Highway Block Funds that can be used specifically for the highway department in non-planned events or non-budgeted. So I would be looking for a motion to proceed with that purchase from windmill.
I will make a motion to proceed with the purchase of the chipper for, what did you say, 20...
23,000.
23,000.
With the money coming out of the highway.
With the money from the highway block grant.
A second?
I did try to see it online. I couldn't find it.
But you can't, it's not available online. Like, he's selling it privately through, but he works for them. Because I did the same thing, and then I found a bunch of different ones, but comparing them, they seem, it seemed like a reasonable cost compared to like those gas ones that had smaller, and those were cheaper.
I just wanted to see what it looked like.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 And it was a...
Does no one that comes in service?
Sure.
Thank you.
It was a late week for correspondence. In the Board of Selectmen PC email, there was an email, original email from Gene Reed. The original email was received June 20th. It was regarding assessing records. Follow-up email was provided, including the data that was requested. That was sent over to him on 8/15 of 2024. I believe you were copied on that. Second email from Gene Reed received August 8th, 2024 regarding the 2025 revaluation. I did provide a response. The contract that we have with Avatar Assessing was a five-year agreement. The fifth year is obviously the year that we do the statistical or cyclical revaluation. They did provide a quote, but in talking with Chad, who was in the office this past week, it is something that typically we could put out for RFP, which I recommend doing. I've actually drafted one for you to consider, and I would like to circulate that with responses due either September 30th, or we can extend it out a little bit further, however you wish, to see how much time, how much exposure you'd like to give it. But I would think a month should be sufficient.
When did the NOMI start, the rebuild process?
It'll probably be in April. April of '25. So that's actually under your general business. I don't need a, a decision on that right now. And then other mail-in correspondence, the FEMA award letter for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, we did get acknowledgement of that. I left a copy of it there, and again, my apologies. I'll forward to you via email, just for lack of paper copy. And then we also received a letter from Joanne Dardano. It was dated August 10th. She's on Pine Street, and for many reasons, she's looking for that to be considered for a private road. I will respond to her with just the petition requirements to, to do that, if she would like to petition the town to have that accepted as a public road, or if you had any comments that you would like to make.
I was going to say, that's all we could do, is just tell her the process of, how many houses are on Pine Street?
Not very many.
Where is Pine Street?
I don't even know where it is either.
It is, it was renamed.
Yeah, I thought it was one of the renamed ones, which is why that's probably part of the confusion.
Tell me the old name, I'll probably know.
Oh, come on, you're going to put me on the spot, aren't you?
Oh, sure.
Let's see how fast the computer is. Jeopardy?
Near, um, Cooper Hill Road. On North River Pond.
Does that make sense?
It does. So Pine Street, Pine Street was Pine Street.
It was Pine Street? Never, it didn't change?
Union Street.
Union Street. Now there's reference to Water Street also. Is that also a private road?
I do believe it is. Water Street.
I'm going to see that. Here, let's see. Hold up, that goes with it. Sorry, I was hogging the stuff.
Yeah, why, it's off Water Street. So Water Street comes off of Cooper Hill, and then Pine Street.
Is off of that.
Cuts along the lake, the pond, and then comes back onto Cooper Hill Road as Snow Lane. Yeah, I mean, it's going to have to be petitioned through a warrant article, right? To accept it.
Right. That's all, that's the only way it can happen.
And I believe this information has already been sent to her, so I think it's just going to be, I'll, I'll give her as much information I can about the last petitioned road and what she'll be looking at. And that is all I have for my report this week.
All right. Since we only got three items on assessing, anybody want to go through that quickly?
So a quick question on assessing, do you have to do one with that block, seven, one and one, we have to do one of them first before the other? Doesn't matter?
Yeah.
So if you're ready for assessing.
Yeah, because then we're going to go to the bid right after, and then we'll continue on with that.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Veterans Tax Credit for Map 4, Lot 5-9.
A second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Making a motion to approve the 2024 Abatement Request for Map 7, Lot 1-N-1.
A second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 And I make a motion to approve the Property Tax Supplement warrant for Map 7, Lot 1-N.
A second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We are going to go to our appointments section, part of our agenda, and this will be to go over the bids we had. Town of Nottingham was looking to sell our older 2012 Ford F350, 6.7 liter V8 pickup, four-wheel drive, had 145,000 miles on it. The color was green. It did include a plow mount, no plow, and it was a flatbed. This vehicle does not run, required injectors, sold as is, no warranty, no nothing. That'll be the first bid we're actually going to go look at.
Which truck did that get?
This is a two thousand and twelve F three fifty pickup truck. Yeah, I didn't look on the back. Probably should've did that the first time, sorry. We have one bid for two hundred and fifty dollars. And then we have a second bid for eight hundred dollars. Does this board feel that the price of eight hundred dollars in getting, letting go of the two thousand and twelve F three fifty? What do you guys think?
Yeah. And it's only worth scrap, scrap.
No, it doesn't run at all.
I think the cost to repair, I have to look back through, but I think the cost to repair, it was about fifteen hundred dollars.
It is well-served, it's used in there. Nothing for us, though.
I'm good with eight hundred.
Well, we don't need something else just lying around, sitting there, so. I wish the bid was higher, but I think I said that about every bid that ever comes through to this town, so.
So I guess I'll make a motion to approve the eight hundred dollar bid for the two thousand and twelve Ford F three fifty.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the bid of eight hundred dollars for the two thousand and twelve F one fifty, excuse me, F three fifty. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Sure you'll contact him? Next, we have one bid for the two thousand and sixteen Ford Explorer. This was an old police car. Then it was given to the Highway Department, and it has a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. This vehicle will not pass inspection, needs front and rear suspension work, and others, quite a few other things. Again, it was one of our old police cars, so this vehicle is also sold as-is. So it's definitely seen its years of use.
And it's running.
But it runs. We have a single bid for two hundred and sixty dollars.
How much do we get if we donate it? As of, can we actually write off stuff like that?
Well, we're not- Well, most salvage yards will probably give you a five hundred dollars minimum, just to, for the metal, whatever they can scrape off the thing, caps or whatever, so.
Or anything like that. If they have signs right down the road, you have a lot of them. Fluctuates a little bit.
Right.
Anyways, between five to seven hundred dollars.
It's over two. Right. I'm not in favor of accepting the two sixty bid, but that's my opinion. Anybody else have an opinion, wanna express to the public?
Nope, it seems to be low.
We just have to make a motion to not accepting this, or decline the bid.
Decline the bid, I guess, do we?
Now, the question is whether we send it back out to be redone. Want to do another round on it?
Or do we just send it to one of those places?
How much was that one to fix?
It was in the neighborhood of five thousand.
I would just say.
It was like engine mount, suspension.
I don't even know if it was drivable.
Not safely. It was, it required like engine mount and suspension work, front and rear. It was pretty significant.
But then you gotta, how much does the tow cost from here to north?
We'll just throw it in the harding container? We'll just put it in the harding container?
Move this stuff up, just slide the container. I haven't tried it, I can haul that off there, see.
I'm sure he has one as well.
Yeah. So I would, I would make more promotion to dispose of it through scrapping and attempting a sale.
Can we reach out to the bidder and ask if he's willing to pay more?
I think then you'd have to open it up for it.
Right. I'm just asking a question, I mean.
Negotiation.
Well, I mean, there's only one person that actually even liked it. Anybody else here have a question on a two thousand and sixteen Ford Explorer, old police, that was not run, unsafe to be in?
It's unsafe, unsafe to drive.
For them to tow it?
No, 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 for the salvage.
So they pick it up for free?
There's a couple of options. I mean, I can do some inquiring.
So just for the people at town in Nottingham, if you're curious what we're gonna do with the old two thousand and sixteen Explorer, is we are going to get as much money as we possibly can for it through salvage, and just disperse it off the town properties. And if anybody's curious, once that's done, we'll be happy to tell you what we got for.
You wanted to get a couple of options, and we'll bring it back, you can pick an option if you want to.
Say it again?
You wanted to get a couple of different options, I called two places, say this is what it'll take a year or a year.
Yeah, I mean, just, again.
Just go with whoever's gonna give us the highest yield.
Yeah, that's fine.
As cheap as I am to, you know, go around and see if we scrape every hundred dollars, but, you know.
Do we need a motion for that?
Probably if we're disposing the town property.
Right.
I'll make a motion to dispose of the two thousand and sixteen Ford Explorer through the highest salvage or scrapping bid we can find.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to dispose of the two sixteen, two thousand and sixteen Ford Explorer in the most lucrative way we can.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Warren. I don't know why we're doing it that way. All in favor, aye. Okay, good. Sorry, just back my whole thing.
Just one thing, I just wanna go back to the letter that you have for that Pine Street. I think she might be confused as to what it means to be, have a road accepted as a public road. Like, I think she thinks that we're going to do improvements to make the road a class-five road. So if we could maybe explain that even if she has it accepted, it doesn't mean that the town is gonna spend a hundred thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars to make the road more accessible, which is her primary concern.
Okay.
Sorry, John?
No.
John, on point of order, by the way, should you reject that bid?
The, the last one for two hundred and sixty dollars?
Should you, should you vote to reject it, though? I'm not looking for writing, sort of just asking.
That's fine.
It was-
I'll make a motion that we reject the, the bid for the two thousand and sixteen Ford Explorer.
I second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We rejected it, we just didn't have a motion, so we-
No, that's, that's-
That's fine.
Somebody's following along at home, I'm sure they figured it out, but now we got it legally written down, so perfect.
Yep.
Thank you, Jean. So now we're gonna go back to our meeting for the general business, contracted services.
Do we have, did we cover all the action items, stuff? How many, forming committees, all that stuff, was that first?
No. Yeah, it is. No, we didn't cover it.
All right, sorry.
If we jump ahead, we won't do that.
Right, no, you're right. Actually, I just, I was just looking at that right there, so, my bad. Reviewing the action items from the last meeting, and we had the four and three to oversee the parks and rec. Then I wasn't a fan of it, I think I stated that last time at the meeting, but it's-
Yeah. Like, it's that meeting with Courtney and Bridget tomorrow, just kinda chat about it. I mean, they think it's a good idea, just because if you can get people from different backgrounds and interests levels for different, you know, rec improvements, whether it be pickleball courts or baseball fields, whatever it might be, is get people from diverse backgrounds that have different interests and generate support and really figure out what the public wants for rec moving forward.
I think it might be a good idea for the recycling, just now that it's not under the oversight of a Public Works Director, which, you know, that's a discussion moving into the next budget cycle as to whether we bring that back under the arm of a Public Works. And when we, when we hired the replacement for the Highway Department, we focused solely on that, just because of the, the pay range. It wasn't, it wouldn't align with a Public Works Director. We were having difficulty finding that. But if, if it's something that we can have discussion with having Steve having that, take, take that responsibility under his arm, then I think it would be good to have a committee that might be able to just analyze where we're at with recycling revenues. It hasn't been evaluated for a little while now, and maybe just help determine path forward, especially with some new oversight.
Yeah, I mean, I think it probably makes sense. It's been a while.
Yeah, I mean, our hauling contract is one cost that's associated, and that absorbs a lot of the recycling revenue that we receive, but, you know, to have members of the public out there.
And I could be, I'd be the board rep if nobody was opposed to that.
Sounds good.
Because I got forwarded to Allen, there's like a number of different in-person seminars that NRA has for people that work at the recycling department, or volunteers, whatever, that have resources on how to improve operations, and it's just, we don't have the bandwidth right now. We're there to probably send two people on Thursday to an in-person, three-hour session, I've been conquered.
Hey, if the board going forward thinks it's a good idea, well, sure. That'll be, hopefully it'll work out well.
What kind of membership do we need, wanna?
There's gonna be a four, four or five people? Three people? How big the board you wanted to make it, or?
Committee, that's it. I don't know. What do you think, John?
I mean, there's probably a separate one for each one, if you put it out there, see what interest you get. If you had enough people, like five or three for recycling or something, I think those would be good, but.
I think a minimum of three would be good.
Yeah, I would think we'd want at least- Yeah, hopefully we can have, five might be nice, if we can get it.
Will these committees have ground rules, like what their purpose is?
Yeah, I think that, you know, first, I mean, and again, I mentioned that a couple of the local communities already have these set up, so you can look at some of their materials. Put up some people that use the recycling center, that have invested interest.
Sign up for something else.
And then we just post it on the website.
Yep.
What are we gonna post? Looking for inquiries for people to be on the recycling committee?
Yeah.
Volunteers.
Volunteers, obviously. There's no stipend for this. No.
No benefits? No benefits.
Yeah.
Somebody up in there has, I mean, just for volunteers to try to form a committee to improve operations and generate more revenue and reduce costs. For the recycling, the rec, obviously, it's own mission, but Catholic to streamline where the focus of rec should be, and I'm sure there'll be plenty of people that save more after care, but.
Well, I just want to, you know, again.
Worst comes to worst. You have three or four meetings, and you say, well, this probably isn't gonna work out.
That's-
Right.
Good. Sure. Do we need a motion for that, or is this, I'm just gonna?
We'll put it out there and see what we get for response on it, and when it comes to the formation of the committee, we can do that. We can-
See how much interest we have. All right. So that'll be put up this week, about maybe, next week?
Yeah, I can get it up this week.
For both rec and? Okay. Anybody in the audience wanna join already? No? We'll hold that to you. Okay, good.
That was a quick reaction. She's like, don't pick me.
We will be having a meeting on September third, rescheduling because of the holiday for Memorial Labor Day, about our building permits and fees that we discussed last meetings, to go over the new changes that are proposed, that are gonna be on there. De, sorry, that was just, I saw, the tax deed inspection review.
I provided you with a spreadsheet. This is all town-owned properties, and I tried to color-code it. The yellow are properties that we have obtained through the tax dealing process. Several of them we've owned for several years. Reasons why we've retained them are still subject to additional research. Green is conservation land. Blue is a municipal occupied property, whether it be this, this Marston, the recycling facility, highway garage. And then the white ones are, I'm not really sure the history as to how we obtain them. Some of them were obtained through donation of the town. Others are, you know, pieces of backland, questionable whether they even exist, or if they're just map issues.
I knew I saw Pine Street someplace, was on this.
I, I mean, some of them are extremely small, like point zero five acre, so I mean, you're talking less than a postage stamp. So just to put this out there, I mean, there's two, three, five, six, eight. There's nine properties that were tax-deed, most of which are vacant. I think only one of them contains an old camp that probably doesn't have much value. Just for consideration as to whether or not you want to try to get these back on the tax rolls. In the past, you've offered them to a butters with the option of merging to their existing property. You've done sealed bid process. You've contracted with real estate agents to try to sell them through the market. But I just wanted you to look at this list and consider it before we get to the next round of potential tax-dated properties. The lien notices went out for two thousand and twenty-four, I believe, or actually, I think they're going out August twenty-ninth, thereabouts. So we could potentially have some additional properties coming into your review for tax deed or waiver.
So like, I have, you know, a question on map one, say it's the Sunrise Lane. It says vacant, North River Bond, note state being used exclusively pie and butter.
Yes.
And that's a point one-three?
Yes.
So why don't we sell it to the butler?
I mean, that's a waterfront property.
Yeah. We have an optional beach.
But we have no-
That's not being taxed.
We have no history. I mean, there's no sale of books, sale page, or anything on
So a lot of these notes were carried forward from my predecessor. He had obviously done a lot of the, the research.
We need a field trip.
Yes.
Well, I mean, I'm, that's a, you know, I know, I know where a lot of these properties are. And I know, you know, if you're a, you know, non-buildable, because you're in all wetlands, or if you're there, whatever, but you know what I mean, there's, you know, like, called backland. I don't know, that's not a street. It's called, there is no street in Nottingham called Backland.
No, Backland just means that it's-
I understand, so. But somebody's land must have bought that.
Right. Right, and, yeah, so we have no idea how these uncolored ones came to the town.
Right, it, it just requires looking through the files. Like I said, some of them were just donated. Others were, you know, they're, they're pieces of parcels that, you know, that the title or the ownership's unclear.
Is there anything that's usable that the town could use for something?
There were a couple that were identified. One of them, like, there was a, that point zero five on Water Street, the note said to keep it for snow storage.
That's unreasonable.
There's others that contain a cemetery.
Well, that's, we're not playing with those either.
Right. Right.
But then like, how do we transfer it from?
But there's also the one on Water Street.
Like I'm saying, like, there's like this vacant lot that's white and how do we turn it? So that we know, like, how do we deed it correctly?
Yeah.
Well, it's already, it's already deeded. It's already in the town's name.
Okay.
The blue ones are being used by the town.
So we don't know?
Yeah, and the one here, the other one that's on Water Street, point one one vacant, unusable, may not exist.
Right.
What does may not exist?
Yeah.
How can you have point one one that may not exist?
It's a beauty spot.
It, it probably needs title research to determine whether it's a piece of an abutting property or if it is an individual lot of record, there's no ownership to, there's no deed in the registry. That's what I mean, there's, there's a lot of more, there's a lot more research that needs to be done on the white ones. The rest of them, we can at least acknowledge that the town acquired them through the tax seeding process, actually holds the deed to them.
And I understand, there's a lot of work to go in to find all these answers. This is not, I'm sure somebody else out there knows how much, when it comes to assessing, trying to find history of projects and properties, it goes a lot. And since we don't have an assessing coordinator like we used to in years past, you know, I understand where this task, that's why, I mean, I know if we can't get all, at least we should be able to maybe start making a dent on like at least five properties on here that we see.
Well, there's several that are abutted on three sides by the conservation land. So, you know, would that make sense to add to their, if they're otherwise inaccessible? Wouldn't we just?
That's right, yes. Just clean it up.
Hence why you're reviewing this.
No, and again, I'm very, you know, this is probably, in how many you're sitting here, this is probably the most details I've ever seen on these, that at least makes it easier to interpret what we're actually looking at.
John, how, how many total properties do we have? Sixty? Eight is that? I'm guessing. A page, a length of a page.
Wow.
Yeah, but we know like the blue, we know the yellow, we know the green, so I mean, we're only looking really conscious, a more question now is the whites, the ones that aren't, which is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
I have the spreadsheet right here.
There's twenty lots that are listed here in white.
There's fifty-four.
Fifty-four?
Fifty-four.
There's twenty lots that are listed in white, but out of these twenty lots, we already know that.
You add a couple lines at the top ahead.
You know, half of them are listed, you know, you know, vacant, no access, it's backland, okay, so we can cut that off, it's not the priority. This one has a cemetery on it, we know that's not, so. You know, adjacent to Mulligan, adjacent to Mulligan Forest. How'd those not get wrapped up when we all put it into Mulligan?
Yeah, because that was a separate piece of property that, you know, that was all could be.
But I don't see Mulligan, which one is Mulligan on there?
The two, like, uh, two-thirds of the way down, number thirty-two and thirty-four, they say backland.
Yeah. No, but we don't, do we own it or is it still owned by the firms?
So, yes, technically, we don't own it.
That was in conservation, it's not our conservation.
We, we own the, right, we, yeah, it's a, it's a weird thing.
We own, kind of own it, but we're never gonna do anything with it.
We, we kinda own it, but we don't really own it.
Because they can.
Right, there's nothing we can do to it.
They can, they still own it, so that thirty-four backland, forty-six acres adjacent to Mulligan, but then it says the sale or grantor was the firm.
At least part of it, yeah.
But that could have been a difference for an old family.
Right.
That's why it might not have been included in that deal.
And, right, do those two abut to each other? Or they're just adjacent to Mulligan?
I can provide you with a map. It's just, I mean, we can't, I can't put it all on one.
No, no, no.
It's interesting when you start looking at some of these properties that.
Yeah, this third one down, this sunrise.
Third one down.
Yeah, that's my concern right there, that one I was.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, I, I know, I read that and I was like, well, that's a problem.
That, that is really a problem.
Not worry about that, if it's supposedly being, depends what they're using it, like did they put something on there and try to get the twenty here?
We need a field trip.
Adverse possession?
Adverse possession.
Well, he doesn't, we're sure gonna tax him forward. You know, no sense using something not getting paid. I mean, if that came to the case, at least we're gonna get tax money for it. You know, one way or the other, it has to be resolved on what's happening with it.
So then they couldn't add this for like the ones that are in yellow, the ones that we say should, you know, Cedar Waters or, you know, twelve acres.
So, yeah, so Cedar.
Do you want us to make a, like, do we want to proceed with taking certain lots and scan?
I think we have to do due diligence and visit the properties, whether it be us or something that we can task off to Dale. He did the inspections in Cedar Waters and just verify, you know, is the property still vacant? Is there a structure on it? Does it have any value?
Those two are like that, I'm not worried about, but the rest of these, like, there's some, I mean, some of these are gonna end up coming in for variances, right, because they're half an acre, so that's not gonna be.
It's the only, only one is in Cedar Waters, right?
Yes.
So Cedar Waters isn't actually even a property, it's.
Right. I'm not worried about that, I'm just saying.
Right, yeah, that's, right, that's a building.
Half acre on McRills Road. Okay. Talk to the butters.
Is there, again, I, I'd never done this before, but, you know, when we look at tax map twelve, lot five, the one you just mentioned before, it's thirteen acres, it's vacant, it's wet, with conservation land on three sides and a possible cemetery. Wouldn't that be just easy to get off our books and say, here, conservation?
It depends if they want it.
Well, they'd have to purchase it from the town.
Yeah.
Okay. But I mean, we can set a, we can probably work out a something. And if the town can't sell it in the open market to get full retail value for it because it's wet, there's a possible cemetery on it, I mean.
So why don't we, and, and I think this has been done in the past, why don't we do an inspection, lay eyes on the physical property, put it out to both the planning board and the conservation to see if they have any interest in retaining the properties for the town. And then if not, then you can determine how you want to get them back on the tax roll.
Well, would you submit for the planning board too?
For the master plan, just to see if, you know, there's any future potential use of that space. I mean, I, I don't know what we're looking at on some of these larger, there was one, twenty-five, three, eight, it's noted as a community area.
Yeah, that's the one I was just looking at.
It's behind East and West Lane and.
Who notes it? That's just noted in there.
Is, is that because when it was developed, they put that aside as, for that area and maybe never paid taxes on it as a community?
Possibly.
Is that area, is that area supposed to be deeded to the, the people that actually live on East and West Lane?
Right.
Good question.
Right.
Like if you did, this, because East and West Lane are, are older, but that could have been the same deal as like doing a, you know, some of the subdivisions now, you know, you do the one acre lots, you put the half into conservation or whatever you do it. This could have preceded that time and the original seller of the property said, listen, so we're just gonna go for you to build here or something.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, something like that, where it should have been deeded to them that, and they should have been paying their share of taxes all.
Well, usually with a community land, there's like a certain amount of assessment that's applied to each property and this just.
Normally, yes.
For common land, right?
Well, I don't mind being the guy that does a little more with this information.
Yeah, definitely. But the tax map says that one's owned by Kelsey Town South Pool.
It says what? Kelsey Town?
Kelsey Town South Pool is the owner name. Every other one that I've clicked on has the town of Nottingham.
Are we on the Sunrise?
Are you, are you on sub lot A though?
The, the one that's called Community Area?
Yeah.
Which one do you want?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-five, three dot A.
We don't have to spend a ton of time on this, but it's just, yeah.
Oh, one more. Forget it.
Oh, there we go.
Are you found it?
They're both, yeah, they're both, the co-owner name of the other one is, is, uh, Community Area as well.
It is called Community Area?
They both are.
But one says Nottingham.
Yeah. Yeah, that is back there.
You can't get to it?
No. Yeah, I think it'd be great to get more detail on that so we can make some educated.
So all of these parcels are set aside separately in the assessing records. They each have a folder. We'll go through and just do some additional research. I'll focus on the, the unknowns for right now. Get them mapped out.
Thank you.
If anything's like abutting, if any of these are abutting each other, focus on them together.
Okay.
And let's keep this on something for like at least once a month, I mean, not next meeting, the meeting after.
Okay.
Let's bring this up again so that we don't let this fall behind, so maybe we can make some better progress.
Okay.
Because that's what normally would happen, once we take a good look at this, it'd get pushed off and then, this is why we're sitting at the way we're sitting right now without answers, where they probably should have been answered years ago.
Okay.
We're done the contracting services part. We're gonna move on to the gym floor proposals. We got four bids. Have you guys got a chance to look at all these?
I did.
The Minuteman floors has been updated from the one that I sent to you on Friday. I think the original quote was for a sport flooring and in order for it to be comparable to the others, it's a, it's been updated to.
Luxury vinyl plank.
Yes.
What's the price?
The Minuteman one?
Minuteman, sixteen thousand, three thirty-three. It's the physical copy that you have in hand. I think the one that I.
This is the new one?
Yeah, that's the new one.
Was it twenty-two?
It was, it was twenty, yeah, I think it was, thereabouts, twenty, actually, I think it was like twenty-six. Um, I did talk to Alan this afternoon, so all these proposals came through him. Originally, we were looking at putting some type of a rollout sport type flooring and the preliminary quotes that we received were in excess of thirty thousand dollars and then there's still question as to whether there is asbestos tile or at least asbestos in the glue in the existing gym floor. So before we lay down a twenty-five thousand dollar floor and jeopardize any type of warranty, Alan's going to make sure that we're not dealing with asbestos, because that would require its own separate mitigation. Um, a lot of the companies would just want us to rip it out first before they put in a new product and then warranty it for potentially twenty years, which is what this flooring is good for. So, long story short, we started out with a sport flooring. We've had to look at alternative options to fit the twenty-five thousand dollar warrant article that was approved by voters this year. So these four quotes have been received. In order of preference, from Alan's standpoint, his, uh, his request is not to go with the, the lowest bidder. His request is actually to go with Wilder Flooring. They purchased Rhymar Flooring, it's locally owned. Their quote is.
Twenty-three, four sixty.
Twenty-three, four sixty. It's all-inclusive of what needs to be done. Second behind that would be Ed's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On that quote there, line three, it says town of Nottingham to provide onsite dumpsters and waste, for waste disposal.
Yeah, I think, well, the other piece is, is that we need to figure out, I think, before we go with any, I mean, we can definitely review them, but if it's a twenty-five thousand dollar warrant article, it's gonna cost more than sixteen hundred dollars to remove the tile.
Right. So that.
They said here, this one, removal.
By us, by somebody else.
By?
Others.
Okay.
Yes.
I thought that was in there, I'm sorry, that others, because there was a double one.
One that included it, and I don't know if that would be.
So the first process that has to take place is we have to determine whether there's asbestos flooring or asbestos glue in place, because then that's going to determine how we have to move forward with removal. And with that being said, that would be something that we would have to consider, maybe the building maintenance expendable trust fund for, to have that done before. And then the twenty-five thousand dollars allocated for the floor replacement would just be for the install of the new.
So why was he suggesting that one?
Why was he suggesting Wilder? Local advantage?
I mean, it's comparable to Portsmouth quality.
It is, it is comparable to Portsmouth flooring.
I mean, it seemed like there was more detail.
Well, yeah, they're both, none of these guys are removing any floor.
No, that's, she said, it's.
Well, I understand that, but I'm saying, right, that.
If there's no asbestos, then I believe they can go over the existing VCT tile. They can seal it, but they can't.
Is that a recommended way to do it though? Or would it be to start fresh with the concrete and remove all the glue and?
This one.
How much does Alan know?
Says go over.
How much does what? What was your question, John?
Well, we have a project like this and Alan's getting bids on it. In the future, let's have Alan here for this.
Yeah.
Because I, I, I can ask you, but you, no offense, but you probably have no clue.
Well, that's the reason why we have a facilities person.
And, so the questions I want to be asked and I want answered are for the guy that's supposed to be, that should be sitting there.
Okay.
So I don't even know why we're talking about it, because again, we're gonna have unanswered questions. I'm not gonna propose any of these that we go on until we actually know, yeah, again, the floor. I don't know why we didn't figure that out already. When we're getting bids to replace the floor, why haven't we discussed, or why haven't we figured out yet if it has the asbestos in it? And we had this warrant article out for, past six months ago. So I mean, this should have been well addressed before we even got bids.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know what you guys want to do, but I'm about to just put this off to the wayside right now. It's good information to have. I'm happy we got the bids, but.
They don't expire until a month from now.
And you think in a month from now, we're gonna have the answers of this bid and then what the contract costs and how much it's gonna cost to.
The roof.
Higher, lower.
Minus five, but I'm just having to think, these guys are like, oh, we'll just take ten thousand dollar on the price.
I'm sure that these prices aren't gonna vary that much and if it's, if it's a month or two from now, but.
What is sport flo, athletic flooring? You know, what is sport floor, whatever? What does that mean?
What is the sport floor?
Yeah.
The sport floor was originally what we were going for. It was a rollout vinyl sport floor. Now it's been upgraded to.
Basically luxury vinyl plank.
Well, yeah, but is sport floor like poured vinyl?
It's just.
It was.
So it's like solid?
It was semi rubbery kind of.
Or is it, is it also plank? Or is it, is it also plank?
I believe it was like... I can remember if it was like roll out like one giant thing with the material itself, it was like more robust than for...
Well, that'd be really big.
It's rollout, seven, seven feet by forty-eight.
So it's roll, so it's like old-fashioned vinyl kind of rolls that you seam together.
Yeah. That looks like.
Yeah, I think we're definitely better with planking. Than those, the seamed.
This one might, I don't know. This one, enforcement says it's seven by forty. So if it's seven inches by forty along those big planks, it would be, I don't think this one. It has changed.
I will have Alan come in for the September third meeting.
I mean, we've dealt with a lot of the people before. They could probably give him an example of what it is, and this is what we're talking about.
Well, yeah, I'd like to see.
I have examples from Portsmouth Flooring, I believe. They sent me website links.
So there's, this Portsmouth one says they're going to go on top.
Right.
Right.
At that price.
I mean, and that's pretty normal to go over the top of the floors, I think.
The only thing of ours is we have the...
There's issues with areas, so then when you, you got to fill it.
Right, right, but that's, that was included in here, that... You know, this is the moisture testing that becomes the unknown thing.
Which is completely different from the other ones.
Yeah, but...
Yeah, but even if you look at Portsmouth Flooring, it says, you know, exclusions. Removal patch, patches to made underlaying backer board, non-minor prep, protection of final cleaning, floor finished, no ceilings, are not included in the scope of this proposal. So they're not prepping the floor? The floor's going to be all prepped? Now the sixteen thousand dollars look even better.
Non-minor prep, I think they're a thing. Uh, stock. That's the adhesive, and then floor patch skim. They do have a quote of like four hundred dollars down, and then the next one underneath it.
So, yeah, I say, right, but then why does it say that it's not part of...
I think it says...
Removal patch and match underlaying that backer board.
We wouldn't be putting back a board on it anyway. There's no underlayment because they're putting on top.
I believe that is a standard cut and dry kind of little...
Right.
Probably, probably.
If I didn't put it on the front, you can't expect it to happen because I've excluded it here on the back. But that patch and skim for three thousand dollars, and then the, the labor is another three thousand.
And then not doing it as part of...
Well, we'll begin.
And then high moisture pressure sensitive.
So I think you have some of the questions that we have, and maybe that were there, Alan will be prepared when he comes to our next meeting on the third.
Okay.
In the meantime, maybe find out if there is, I don't know what the process is.
Did we check with the place in Raymond?
With the place in Raymond? Is that Dec-Tec?
Yeah.
Yes. Yep, they wouldn't provide a quote until we mitigate.
So they, they were smart about saying, hey, you need to do this first.
Yes.
That's probably a good call on their part. So it sounds like we have to do that no matter what.
And then how far was this going to come up? Just, just, it wasn't going to come up to the doors or anything? This is just down to those couple of doors?
Correct. I think that's just the gym, correct. Because originally, he was quoting it so that it was going to be the gym, the hallway, this room here, and then the new, the community room, which will eventually be your conference room. But then, based on the pricing that we were getting, it was, you know, sixty, seventy thousand, all-inclusive. We said we need to break it out into what's been approved and what we can actually move forward with. All right, so tables.
So actually, I was for Alan. We need to know about the floor inside. Because again...
Have asbestos tested.
Whoever, however gets it done, that should be priority to get it done this week or, I mean, I don't even know if it should wait till next week. Because again, the town's at, we did the whole warrant article for this amount of money to get this project done. Here we are in August. You know...
Well, they couldn't do it over the summertime.
Right.
Well, still, we could have had everything set up and lined up in the row that they could be doing it next month, but we're not even at that point of having it ready for next month, so...
Okay.
We want to put that on the agenda for...
Nine three.
Yeah.
Got it.
Any more questions on that? Am I missing anything else from there?
Going back to the contracted services.
Thank you.
Did you want to put out the revaluation for a proposal? As I've drafted?
I would. The warrant didn't pass last year for evaluation, so...
Right.
Whatever we can save, if possible. It seems like what they're going to charge us next year for the valuation at the scene.
I mean, we're still good for a whole nother year.
Of valuation services, which is going to be down, which they already have in their contract.
Right.
Yeah, they provided an estimate, and then they, they'll give us a separate agreement if we choose to go forward with Avatar.
Okay, so...
So what they've done is they've estimated what the cost will be based on our parcel count and...
So it's not, I thought you said it was, so it's not part of our contract?
It is part of our contract. It's included in the contract as a quote. So what you do is when you're on, they have the contract set up so that we're cyclical-based. They do a percentage of the town each year, and then in the fifth year, they tie everything together. And that's when you do your statistical update. So ideally, it would make sense to have our assessing firm, who's already done that data collection for the four years prior, to finalize everything. But there are the companies that are certified New Hampshire assessors that, you know, they all have to follow the standards. So we could potentially have another firm come in and complete it.
Okay.
I don't foresee there being a need to change.
We'll see what we get back.
Exactly. But just to do due diligence, I mean, you're talking about a large contract that we have a capital reserve fund that we're investing into to prepare for this moment. I, I mean, the, the need for us to go through the revaluation process, I mean, we're at like a six, less than sixty-five percent equalization ratio right now. So that means that, you know, properties are under assessed thirty-five percent to the standard market value.
It's been a crazy few years.
It's inevitable.
But that, again, you could say that, again, an argument to the point is the fact that since interest rates rose, property values might actually be down from where we thought they would have been two years ago.
Right.
So to actually say that we could be at sixty-five, we actually could actually be at seventy or eighty depending on, you know, what the market is. But over the course of the normal time of years, when you do the, the values, usually they'll jump up when they get done. It's usually, I'm sure somebody might correct me if I say this wrong, but sometimes they'll go to like your one, your value is one oh five, you know, a hundred, five percent, and then obviously it'll start going down just depending on after they do the first, the end of the five year. But usually at the time of the five years, you're right, we get down to that sixty, seventy percent where we have to get it.
Well, that's beyond, I mean, the, the range is supposed to be ten percent higher, ten percent low, and then beyond that. But obviously, we know that we're in...
Market is quite different than it's been over the past twenty years recently, so some things you can't use the traditional norm for. But there are other assessing companies out there, but beware.
Were you okay with the draft RFP that I put together?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, it's pretty standard.
Straightforward.
So with that being said, as we're going into budget season, it's been, I, I don't know, I haven't been able to find evidence of when we last put out our legal services and also our auditing service. So I, I think it is probably in the best interest of the town to see what's out there for options.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I will draft RFPs for those as well.
Will you send those to us, of course, if we can just quickly see them?
Yeah.
I'd like to see them, just, I know you probably would.
I could put the revale one out, and then I'll just, I'll present those to you at the nine-three meeting.
What's next?
Any more on that?
We have a few other things down the bottom, policy update, Facebook page, any of that stuff you want to quickly talk about and take it down.
I did do some research on the Facebook page, looking at some other towns, and basically all they post is information about meetings, anything that would be on the website essentially is posted, or if there's an emergency closure of a road or a department building. That's what they, they post on there. I didn't hear back from Deerfield, but the Northwood Town Administrator emailed me, or Town Secretary emailed me, and she said that they don't really have a policy in place, but it's just whatever the selectmen approve to be posted, which would normally be all of those things I just mentioned would be posted, but it's not, it's, they post on behalf of the select board.
Okay.
And then they, they do shut comments off. It's, there's no commenting, it's just informational only.
So it's basically the same things that are, would either be posted on Nixle and/or on the website?
Correct. And if it's anything outside of what would normally be posted on the website, the select board would have to approve it.
And what's the burden on the people posting it?
Yeah, the question is, what's the time?
Right.
With our five Nottingham pages of, I'm not saying official Nottingham pages by any sort of means, but...
All the unofficial stuff?
In this day and age, if you can't find the information...
But that's what people seem to go to.
Right.
They're going to go anyways.
Yeah.
Because they have the most hits, and that's how it works. They got more hits, they got more popularity.
Right.
Are we wasting our time with this page? I mean, again, nothing's really a waste of time, but I'm saying, is it, is this something to put the resources, our time for? Where there's blogs, there's this, there's our town website page, which we do, I, if people really want to know, it's just easy to say Nottingham, New Hampshire, dot gov, and it pops, dot gov, and it pops up.
If, if they can't comment, they're not going to follow.
The bacteria warning was right there today on the website.
Like if the recycling center's closed, yeah, we get the Nixle, but not everybody in town uses Nixle.
I'll tell you, that's probably the best thing.
Correct. I'm just thinking, the more information you can get out there from the town as a resource to people, but that's up to the board.
I want nothing to do with it, so I'll tell you that, like, if somebody else wants to take the spear at it, go right for it, but...
No, we wouldn't be responsible for posting it, it would be somebody...
Yeah, but then, I mean, right now, so even looking, I mean, not trying to burden on, um, but this, I mean, she's already got ten thousand things that she's already doing on top of this.
Right. I don't need, I don't want to add more stuff that's not...
She's trying to work with the assessing part of it, everything that you have, it's...
Okay.
That's, it's over, there's nobody else, and your time is well worth more money than playing on Facebook. So I don't want to see...
I don't like Facebook.
No, I don't think...
You put it on Twitter. Correct, sorry.
I don't like Twitter either.
So...
Insta chat.
All right, fine by me.
I'm, again, that's, I'm just, again, we're, we're having an open discussion.
Doesn't sound like anybody's, I, I just thought it would be a good idea to get it from the town.
I highly recommend Nixle.
Yep.
That's...
Yeah, I think the Nixle's great.
Well, we could create a town Facebook page and refer people to the Nixle alerts for, you know, important information into the town's website for anything meeting or otherwise related.
It seems like that's worth.
Yeah, totally. Just put a bleep every month on the Facebook, I mean, on the town page, say, hey, do you have Nixle?
People aren't going to that page. You completely fell by the questions I could ask numerous times on Facebook. They don't go to that page.
I mean, if you're, if you're looking for events and activities, the rec department already has a page, the police department has a page, where they get information out there.
You know, there's nothing wrong with saying, hey, you know, again, I understand what you just said there, but people should be able to do their own due diligence. It's not, I mean, how simple we trying to make, I mean, again, we're...
I go to the website if I'm looking for something or if I'm...
It's there. You want to see the minutes to our meetings, it's there. If you want to see, and if you don't know how to find it, I'm, just go on things, ask, and somebody's going to go, look at the town page, it's right there for you.
It's not hard, put Nottingham, town, in Google.
New Hampshire.
No, it'll default you because unless you're searching UK stuff all the time.
So... Did we get our signs for no smoking?
Yes. I don't know if they're up yet, though.
No, I didn't see them when I walked in, but...
They're building a subject.
No, I know, I'm just, I was just...
Yeah.
We got it. That's all I want to know.
Yeah.
I had a pleasant conversation outside with some gentlemen on Wednesday that they're well aware, so... What else?
I think the policy update, I'll see if some of that cut off down there.
Yeah.
That's a long running policy update, so we...
Yeah.
It's a long call.
Yeah.
It was a policies update for nine-three.
Okay. So we're done with that. Re-value action, and this is next meeting.
Alan sent me a message, said that the floor testing would be done by Friday this weekend, he will be here for the next meeting.
Were you texting him, or was he just watching?
He's watching.
Nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kudos, he gets kudos for that.
Yes. There was something too about that monitoring system there, just so you know, guys, is that when we do do the move, that system's very old.
It is very old, and I'm working on getting, because obviously we have to transition into the other room.
The, the meeting on Wednesday, planning board couldn't see anybody or anything, so...
It's, Doug Cummings is coming in tomorrow with an AV company just to see if we can fix the joystick controller. I can, I can maneuver it and get it to work.
He mentioned stuff at the meeting about it, but I'm not technically, I, I, he was talking to me about stuff, and I was just sort of right over my head.
The, the Latronic system that runs everything that broadcasts to channel twenty-two is, it's, it's outdated. We can't get much for it, so we're talking about trying to get refurbished equipment to make this work as long as we can. But obviously, we're talking about using the cable franchise fees to upgrade the equipment into the next room, correct? So I have quotes in process for that. I met with a company last week, and we'll be meeting with a company that he's bringing in tomorrow to see about the controller, and they're going to look at the space. Yes, Doug has been very great.
He's been very helpful.
Yes.
Always find out when it's not working. All right, are we all done with that? Public comment?
Sure.
All right, Mr. Reed.
He's got a big list.
G Nate, three forty-five Stage Road. On the subject of assessing, I think Alan's statement was pretty accurate, borne out by a recent report that we're about thirty-four percent, I think that's what she said? You know, that report that we got shows that we are about thirty-four percent undervalued. So on the revale, people can expect to see the evaluation go up, but that does not mean an increase in your tax bill. Does the Avita monthly... Does the Avatar monthly, uh, which amounts to a yearly payment, have anything in it for the revale? I thought it did.
In the contract?
You pay them what, monthly?
Monthly for the assessing service.
But that does, that include, does that include the licensing for the software?
And there's a separate licensing for the software.
Does it include anything for the revaluation year?
No.
No, it does not. So that's going to come as a lump sum regardless of who does it?
Correct.
What what effect?
Isn't that the reason why we have the Warren article every year that we split up for the twenty five grand for it?
Yes.
Correct.
That's, that's, that was my question, John. I don't understand at this point. You're right.
Well, that was a hundred thousand.
What does it pay for the yearly, uh, thing that gets voted on?
The, and the five year revale.
Yep.
It does pay for that.
Correct.
That's what it's raised for.
Okay, that was.
Raise it in one corner.
Cut up over, cut up chunks.
Right.
So that's been paid for partially already is my point.
Correct.
Except it's been, like.
It wasn't funded in twenty twenty four.
They got three years in there?
Yes.
So we do have, we, the town has three years of.
We, the collective.
We collectively had, have three of the four years for the revale scrolled away.
Yep.
Well, technically, there's more than that. I think the balance into last year is over on good, right? The revale.
I don't have the figure with me.
Yeah, there might, right, there's something.
So it's at least three years worth of that.
Correct, but I think there's.
Revale set aside, possibly some more carryover from the previous year.
Was it ready for the questions? Well, I don't have an answer for you, Gene. We'll find out for you.
Okay, good. Um, so the, what is the effect of the of the rejection of that last year then? On on a revale? When you don't have enough money to do the revale?
We might have to increase the amount for the Warren article for two thousand twenty five.
I mean, we have to pay for it. They're not doing it for free.
Oh, I understand.
So it, in one way or the other, it's going to have to be.
Or.
I would suggest it's got to be sold to the public, though. To. To explain, I mean, it got rejected last year. It's the first year it's ever been rejected.
That I'm aware of, yeah.
I'm never, you're right, first, but again. You have, the service has to be provided because we have to have it done. It's so, one way or the other, whether it's rolled into our budget as a line item for, I don't know if that's how we'd have to do it. I never, this has never happened in my six years here, so.
It's not a budget, I know, because it's moved to the capital reserve fund. So it's not.
We have a capital reserve fund, but if the bill came up to be a hundred and twenty thousand, we only had a hundred and eighty in the capital reserve fund.
Where do we go?
We have to come out of the town.
Right. But no, I thought John was suggesting we move the annual amount each year into the budget.
No, 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 no. I'm saying we have to get the money from somewhere to pay for it.
So you've got three fifths of it possibly.
We hope, yeah.
Yeah, already set aside.
Three fifths.
I don't expect an answer, but I'm just raising the issue that.
I think about it, too.
Yeah.
And what happens if we don't do a revale, you know, we get in.
The Department of Revenue can order that we do.
Right, exactly. We get report, you're right.
The, and the reason, just for those that aren't aware, the revale is a constitutional, New Hampshire constitution required.
Once every five years.
Take values anew no less than every five years. And as John mentioned, this recent market is something we've never seen before. So we're, we're behind as are a lot of towns, uh, looking at the equalized valuation. A lot of towns are in the same situation. So we're, so we're going to see that. The fact that going to another assessing company. We've, were you on the board then?
Oh, yeah, certainly, yeah.
That wasn't the best experience, shall we say, so.
That's why if you heard my comment.
I did hear your comment. I gave you the hmm. We've, we've had issues with Avatar before, but overall, I would say. That from what I've experienced, they are the way to go if they haven't changed. Lauren's still in charge?
She is.
The fact that the guy comes in, you know, he's here on Thursdays, on every Thursday, whatever, but. You're able to contact them. They're due diligence about going out to the new houses, getting them done. You know, I mean.
The assessing contract's not due, so we, we have one more year. We have two thousand twenty five remaining in the five year agreement. So we'll be looking to potentially put that out for a proposal for another five year agreement.
The thing I noticed, Gene, in the last five years, as you know, watching this, is that we don't, we never had to chase Avatar down like before. That was a huge, that's why. Even though what they're costing us, but the fact of not having to go through all that, chase them down, try to find this, waiting for days for it, they're just way better on top of the game.
I agree.
In my opinion, and I obviously thank you for.
I agree, and I've personally had issues with Avatar in the past.
Yeah.
And Lauren and I have agreed to agree. We're on the same page now. It's taken a while. Thank you.
So I look forward to some feedback. Well, it's just pouring rain out. Don't give me more questions. None of us are rushing the lead.
No hat. I'm going to just jump two minutes. The gym floor, that's still going to be regardless of who you pick. I was there when Alan did some measuring once. The floor is not level.
No.
No, we know that. They were doing it, they had their laser out measuring.
And some of these contracted services, whether the floor gets ripped up, they're saying, you know, are they going to resurface the cement underneath it in order to make sure it gets leveled or whatever?
It'll still never be perfect.
No.
But hopefully better.
Those that play basketball or pickleball won't know the difference, and the floor will be suitable for those sports.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think, um, when I just pulled up the quarter two report, it was about seventy seven thousand for the revaluation capital reserve fund.
Why does it say there was a withdrawal?
Yeah, well, it was put into a CD.
It was put into a CD.
Oh.
It was a hundred thirty thousand taken out last year to be put into a CD.
Okay.
So there should be a hundred thirty thousand.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense because that's, yeah.
The beginning balance in the beginning of two thousand twenty three was fifty five and change. There was a seventy five thousand dollar deposit, which was the Warren article plus a CD, and then they took a hundred thirty thousand dollars out and moved it into a CD.
So there should be at least a hundred thirty.
Hundred thirty.
Or. Or that value.
Right. But there's, there's like asterisks that show you that.
Yeah.
They have the money.
It was five thousand in a CD. Five thousand of the revaluation fund was in a CD maturing April twenty ninth. Another seventy thousand was in a revale CD maturing August second. Uh, this is as of the second, uh. The final quarter of twenty twenty three. And then nineteen sixty eight twenty seven was the ending balance.
Yeah. I don't like the way it's worded as withdrawal. Because withdrawal.
So according to this, it looks like seventy seven thousand. I'll get a, I'll get an exact figure from the trustees, because I need their third quarter, second quarter, I'm sorry.
Should be one thirty one and change.
Yeah, from the way this looks, if they took.
It started at fifty five thousand in cash. They took this two CDs that matured in two thousand twenty three, deposited them, and then withdrew the cash plus that, the proceeds from the CD for a hundred thirty thousand dollars, and that's in the CD right now.
That's like bad accounting to me.
Well, it makes sense to me the way I read it. I can read it left to right, but.
Right, but the fund technically, whether it sits in the CD or whatever it sits.
That's why they have the footnote to show, okay, that's where the withdrawal was for.
It shouldn't say withdrawal until we actually withdraw it to spend for its purpose.
My battery died.
But anyway.
Any other public comment?
Alan, could you repeat the amount that we got, uh, for the grant, uh, our, our grant?
Sure.
I have the right number.
All right, grant funding opportunity has been approved in the amount of one hundred sixty three thousand, eight hundred forty four dollars and thirty two cents in federal funding. Uh, as a condition of the grant, you are required to contribute non federal funds equal to or greater than five percent of the federal funds awarded or eight thousand one ninety two twenty two for a total approved budget of one seventy two oh three six fifty four.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, all set. Uh, we are not going into non-public tonight because we have nothing, which is great. That's something nice, so I will be looking for somebody to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the board's selectman meeting.
We have a motion to second to close the meeting, adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night Nottingham. We will see you next selectman's meeting. It won't be till September third.